Okay, it is 7:01 and we are going to begin the meeting of October 28th, 2019. Is there a closed session report?
No report of action.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Martin.
Here.
Mayor Vatterlaus.
Here. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Martin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, beautiful, liberal, and righteous.
Oh, I did that out of order. The first item is a proclamation for Arbor Day and I'm going to read the proclamation. This is a proclamation in recognition of the observation of the City of Pacifica Arbor Day on November 9th, 2019 and a Tree City USA qualification event. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is dedicated to the planting of trees in our community in order to support our environment and bolster our quality of life. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed at various times throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees and their surrounding soil can sequester carbon for thousands of years thus helping to mitigate the effects of climate change and contributing to the city's climate action goals. And whereas trees can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas by increasing retail spending, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper products and wood for homes and businesses. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal. And whereas the city takes pride in being environmentally sustainable encourages residents to do the same and encourages the efforts of community groups such as Tree City Pacifica toward the planting of trees in Pacifica. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sue Vatterlaus, Mayor of the City of Pacifica, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday in November as Arbor Day in the City of Pacifica. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations done this 28th day of October, 2019. And I understand there are people here from the Pacifica Tree Group and if you'll come forward.
My name is Gail Benton Shoemaker and Sandy Ayers and Tom Weber and there's a much larger group but we were a little confused today with the power outage.
So we're all on this.
We're from Tree City Pacifica and working in conjunction with the city and the school district and Valamar Conservators and 4-H and Scouts to hold an Arbor Day celebration on November the 9th. And on that day, there will be a presentation. Sandy will be giving a demonstration on how to plant trees. We will have Scouts and an NCCC team, the National Civilian Community Corps coming, and 4-H members and actually some firemen from, who are going to help with planting trees as well. And we'd like to invite you and the rest of the city to come. Those who want to plant trees can, but we will also be having a tour, kind of a guided walk around Calera Creek to talk about trees and the importance of trees and also Arbor Day and Valamar as well. Trees beautify our city while helping fight climate change, so I hope you'll all join us on November the 9th.
And can you say the location and the time again?
Oh, I don't think I said the location. We're meeting in front of the school district office. The first trees, the first four trees will be planted in front of the school district office at 3:75 Ranadilmar.
In what time?
We will start at 10:00 and go to approximately 1:00.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, picture?
Picture.
Did you want to say something first before we take the picture?
Okay.
And are we giving them, Sarah, are we giving them the proper?
(inaudible)
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 Okay, and we have a second proclamation and this is the Olone Portola Heritage Day. Whereas in 1769, a Spanish expedition led by Gaspar de Portola followed the Olone peoples' trade routes between villages to become the first Europeans to explore Alta California by land and to see the San Francisco Bay. And whereas at the time of the Portola Exhibition, California had the densest population of Native Americans on the continent north of Mexico, which is estimated by historians to have included more than 300,000 individuals. And whereas at the time of the Portola Exhibition, 2,000 Olone were estimated to live in Samatéo County and had lived here for an estimated 10,000 years. And whereas Europeans had been colonizing North America for well over 200 years by this time, but California, isolated by high mountains and harsh deserts, remained largely unexplored. And whereas the Portola Exhibition would not have been possible without the Olone custom of feeding visitors rescuing the expedition which had lost a supply ship and were very hungry, occasionally needing to eat a mule to survive, and leading them to villages along their trade routes. And whereas the Portola Exhibition mapping of the Olone trade routes was the first mapping of the location of Olone villages and their trade routes in Samatéo County. And whereas the Portola Exhibition sighting of the San Francisco Bay on November 4th, 1769, from the discovery point in what is now the City of Pacifica was the catalyst for future European development of the state of California and a turning point in history for the Olone and other Native American people in California who were deeply affected and reduced by subsequent missionization and colonization. And whereas Samatéo County approved a feasibility study for a proposed 90-mile-long Olone Portola Heritage Trail following Olone trade routes the Portola Exhibition took to explore the Samatéo County Peninsula. And whereas Pacifica City elected official staff committee commission members as well as members of the Pacifica Historical Society been participating in Samatéo County-led effort. And whereas the Olone Portola Heritage Trail presents trail users an opportunity to learn about this first encounter between the Olone people and the historic Gaspar de Portola Exhibition from Spain. And whereas the City of Pacifica along with Samatéo County Parks and the National Park Service will hold an event commemorating the 250th anniversary of this first contact encounter on November 2nd, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica does hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2019 as Olone Portola Heritage Day in recognition of the first encounter between the Olone people and the historic Gaspar de Portola Exhibition. We encourage everyone in the City of Pacifica to celebrate the cultural riches our community has to offer, recognizing this day as part of our Pacifica, Samatéo County, San Francisco Bay area, and California history done this 28th day of October, 2019. And Mike Perez will come up and say a few words.
Good evening, Mike Perez, your Parks, Beach and Recreation Department Director. There's not much more to say after that proclamation although I will say so six days from now, on Saturday, November 2nd, we will be hosting the Olone Portola Heritage Day at the Community Center from 10:00 to 3:00. And we're co-hosting with the National Park Service Golden Gate National Recreation Area along with Samatéo County Parks. And I would like to point out because some of their members are here and you read in the proclamation, but we have had lots of participation, not just for this event but over the years from the Pacifica Historical Society, they're all sitting right there. So this was, the trail efforts started probably at least four years ago from the county-led effort that you heard about there. But this Saturday, folks are welcome, we're going to have opportunities for hikes, there's going to be a lot of activities in the building, there'll be a historical program with Q and A. The opening ceremony will be at 11:00. There'll be a dedication of the mural that's out there now, so if you haven't been by the Community Center, it looks a lot different on the west side of the building. So lots of things going on there. If anyone would like any more information, they can contact us, they can go to thecitypacifica.org/OPHT website. But if you're an early morning hiker, call and you can reserve a spot on the 8:30 a.m. hike. But other than that, we'll have a couple hikes at 2:00 and 2:30 depending on how many people are there. And we'll have a shuttle at those hikes from the Community Center up to the Fassler Parking Lot which is a new parking lot. There'll be ribbon cutting for that on the 30th. So it'll be a place for folks to park and head up on the trailhead. And again, any more information folks would like to know, contact Park and Rec Department, they'll be happy to tell you what's going on.
Thinking for all your hard work.
Yeah, Director Perez, I really want to thank you for all the work you did. I know how hard you've worked for like the past year, year and a half, I don't even know how long, so thanks.
Appreciate that very much, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Mike, you've been working on this for a really long time and also every, there's been a lot of other folks that have been working on it too, including past mayors, Sue DeGree and John Keener were also working on it too, so I want to thank them and also city staff. And I'm looking forward to it.
Picture.
So picture Mike?
Oh, yeah.
No?
No.
Don't picture?
We're good.
You've got a lot of pictures.
And if you do come on Saturday, we'll be welcomed by none other than our Mayor Sue Vatterlaus, so you got to come for that at least, right? So that's a good one. So hopefully we'll see everybody there, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Now we're onto the consent calendar and we do have an item from the public, item number 10, that someone from the public would like to have removed. Are there any other numbers?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 9.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Okay, item number 10, Thursday Roberts, this is...
Did you mean 12?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Wrong number down, sorry.
She put the wrong number down, so she needs to...
Oh.
Got you covered.
So just make another motion for...
Can I make a motion to approve item number 10 on the consent calendar?
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. So we're on to oral communications.
I get it, I thought she wanted...
The first person is Marsha Murphy, followed by Carolyn Hara Mio, Suzanne Moore, and then Gloria Stofan. Oh, now we're getting more. Okay. So, Marsha Murphy? Okay.
Now they're totally out of order. Hi, everybody. I have been noticing a lot of activity on the next door thing when I have power, which is occasionally these days, regarding the RVs on the street. And I just want to repeat to council that we could do a little bit about that, like we could find some kind of safe parking for people managed by the Resource Centers with a pathway to stable housing. In the recent canvassing that we did, we found out that 90% of the people that we talked to were from Pacifica and had really strong ties. So I just support anything that we can do to support our fellow Pacificans, they're not there by choice, it's something that's been happening to a lot of people, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. Carolyn, followed by Suzanne and Gloria.
Good evening, my name is Carolyn Hara Mio, I've lived in Pacifica for 31 years and I've been to a number of the council meetings and I've been to your goal-setting meetings. And I always keep this goal in my possession because I think it's very important to constantly remind all our leaders, faith leaders, political leaders, everyone in the community, to always put compassion as the center of any policy. And I know that that's a difficult thing to do, but it is one of the goals that you set at the very first goal-setting meeting. And I think it's absolutely essential and it's the moral kind of thing to do. I also with Marsha have heard some folks that have been in disagreement with people living in their motorhomes. Anita Reese corrected some of us when we were saying RVs and she reminded us that no one living on the streets is living there as, having recreation, that it's at that point, it's not a recreational vehicle, but it is a motorhome. And these are folks that have had ties with Pacifica and still do, and they are doing the best they can do. Many of the folks that we've talked to need some time to get over a bad patch in their life and I think that's something that the council should consider and always, again, be patient and willing to put compassion at the center of any policy that you make. And I certainly can't see how anybody could justify if we force the people that are living in their motorhomes to leave our city. I can't see how anyone can justify that that would show any sort of compassion at all. Thank you.
Gloria, followed by Julie Sterben and Haya Gordon.
(inaudible)
I, yes, Suzanne.
I did.
Shell.
Sorry, Suzanne, I turned your card over.
That's okay.
Suzanne, then Gloria.
Good evening, Suzanne Moore, resident from the Manor District. On Friday, October 25th, I was fortunate to attend a forum hosted by the Housing Leadership Council. One of the morning workshops was on safe parking and panelists included Pastor Paul Baines of Project We Hope in East Palo Alto and Officer Chris Rasmussen, the Redwood City Police Liaison for the homeless. We Hope started their safe parking program in May. Their service hours are from 7:30 in the evening to 7:30 a.m. and the site holds about 20 of the motorhomes and maintains a waiting list. The program vets participants and prioritizes East Palo Alto residents, families, veterans, and elders. We Hope provides restrooms and showers, a mobile waste service unit, and case management to assist clients towards safe, affordable housing. In less than six months, We Hope has found homes for 15 of the motorhome vehicle dwellers. They are providing waste management to reduce illegal dumping and they have increased safety through their vetting process. Officer Chris Rasmussen acknowledged the success of We Hope and further reported how the vetting process has contributed to public safety. In describing Redwood City's vehicuarily housed, Officer Rasmussen states that 95% are quiet and include the working poor, those who are more fragile and lack skills to find housing, and those displaced economically. But Rasmussen believes a small portion, roughly about 5%, are what he calls "bad apples" and are responsible for criminal activities, drug use, and illegal dumping. Through the vetting process, We Hope excludes that element from participation and the result is increased safety for both program participants and the community as a whole. Pacificans are concerned about reducing the number of motorhomes on our streets, reducing illegal dumping, increasing public safety, and providing a pathway to safe, affordable housing. I was encouraged to find that We Hope program is able to successfully address all these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria, and then Julie, and then Katerina Williams.
Um...
Was that biased?
Yeah, I did.
Sorry, the cards are in interesting order.
Good evening, city council and city staff. I just got my power on about an hour ago, so I feel kind of disoriented and kind of like a Looney Tune, so please bear with me. But I definitely need to be put on record, the RVs are an issue, an issue that I also need to address as a safety and a health issue. However, there is a plan. The plan that Anita Reese is what some of us, and I hope there will be more, that are going to support. And I know that we will be able to solve and also be able to create a grouping of people that hopefully we would be able to work with. And she's got a good plan, that's all I can say. With fingers crossed, we'll get to where some of us will be able to go ahead with Pacifica Resources Plan. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Julie, Haya, Katerina Williams.
I just wanted, because I know that council members are getting a lot of complaints about motorhomes, but I wanted to support the efforts of the council to help find, help unhoused people. You set up the task force and I know the task force is really working hard and the people at Pacifica Resource Center are working hard to create safe parking areas. And we know it's been done in other cities and I know we can do it here. And I know that the council supports that, I just want to commend you for that. And I'm also speaking for Haya, if that's okay? She sent this, that's okay, right? Says, "Dear council members, I had hoped to be at the meeting to make my comments in person, but my health doesn't allow it, so thank you for letting my statement be read. These are difficult times, both nationally as locally. As a Pacifica resident, I feel that I must speak out against a motorhome ban. There are other ways to deal with the needs of unhoused Pacificans. Please take a moment to consider that this could be you, me, or any of us. Try to remember hard times people have gone through previously in this country. If you think about the Great Depression, there's so many stories about people helping other people out, people that they didn't even know, in the spirit that together we sing or together we swim. We are fortunate to have the Pacifica Resource Center led by Anita Reese who has come up with a plan to guide the city through a way to help unhoused Pacificans. A motorhome ban will not help this process, in fact, it would make it worse. Please don't go that route. Instead, work on solutions, many of which have already been suggested, so that we can move forward together." Thank you, Haya.
Thank you. Katerina Williams, Denny Asness, and Ellen Haig.
Hi, good evening. I'm a local Montara resident for five years and prior to that, five years in Pacifica. And I would really like to know how the city council is thinking about and would hope to address future power outages where the stoplights go out and traffic is backed up immensely, including I spent 20 minutes in the tunnel this weekend going from Montara to Pacifica, it took me an hour. I spoke to the captain of the Pacifica Police Force who explained to me that having half of the police, in order to have all policemen manning and moving traffic, it would take about half of the police force. Additionally, in the event of an actual serious emergency, we obviously don't want to have police officers in risk of their own safety there as well. So I would just like to propose that the community come together, that we figure out a way to have backup generators, other ways to at least operate our stoplights in the event that everyone needs to move out of here quickly for whatever reason, perhaps not in a mandatory evacuation, but people just need to move quickly. So I would love to hear ideas the Pacifica City Council has come forth with or what actually happened. I realize that there's the Caltrans involved and PG&E, so it's not just obviously the Pacifica City Council, but I'm wondering what can be done. I know power was out in Half Moon Bay, but the lights were working in Half Moon Bay and I'm not sure what the difference was, but I'm hoping that in the future we can just have a more cohesive system to drive out, basically. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Denny and then Ellen.
Good evening, council members. Coming off that, I just want to throw in that I, coming off the comments about the power outage, that I really send a lot of appreciation to PG&E workers for all the work that they've been doing and the work that they did here in Pacifica to get my, our power back on. So I'm also speaking mainly to support the plan of the Pacifica Resource Center for safe parking for motor homes and the work that the council itself has been doing on this. The plan has had a lot of input and work, and the best, fairest, most equitable, and most humane action to take is to allow that work to go forward so that a safe place can be created for people who need that. These are desperate times for many people. We need to take care of each other as part of the Pacifica community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen.
Good evening, Ellen Haig, resident of Pacifica. For most of us, the last couple of days have been a little stressful with the power outage, minor when compared to our neighbors living in vehicles or outdoors because they have no home they can afford. I brought a flyer I've had for a while from last year from St. Vincent de Paul. You might be familiar with that organization. They support people that are in need. For most of us, cold means turning on the heat and bundling up in an extra cozy pajamas and blankets at night. However, this is not the case for the homeless. Increasing Samhail County housing costs have displaced many people who are now sleeping in their cars or on the street. These are our neighbors who need our help now more than ever. The Pacifica Motor Home Homeless, in a PRC survey in February, suggested all surveyed had strong ties to Pacifica. 90% are working, 50% are over the age of 50, and 50% are economically displaced from former Pacifica housing. The number of motor homes on the streets could be reduced by a 24-hour safe parking lot with case management for a pathway to stable housing. And the PRC and Anita Reese are all prepared, they just need our city's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Communications.
That's it.
There's one more.
There's one more? Okay.
I think that other lady.
Did she put in a card?
That lady there told me she wanted to talk.
Yes.
In pink.
And Sarah said she.
For oral, for oral communications, or item number 12. Ian, you have a card, but it's under 12.
That's one of the cards, the other one's oral communications. I have a two and a half ones.
We'll come up and I'll just add it.
And then the other lady also.
She's. Yeah, the topic I want to speak about is I was recently asked to join a Samhail County Cannabis Association, which is a countywide nonprofit 501(c)(6). I didn't know that existed. That's a nonprofit, specifically industry or trade group. And this is representing all of the dispensaries that exist so far, several that are working to exist, grow operations around the county, basically every, every industry, every business in the county that is either happening or about to be. And so we've had two meetings, and my job is community liaison, so here I am, liaising. And what I've learned so far is, well, first of all, you can pat yourselves on the back because in the entire county, we're the most proactive, we are the head of the game, and I think we can be very proud of that fact, because we don't usually have the opportunity to be like the, the leading edge of something. But we are doing that with this, so I think that's, that's great. But the other thing I've learned, though, is that it is a lot more difficult for these businesses to break even than we were kind of hoping it would be. There's a lot of regulations at the state level, the county, at the city level, a lot of things they have to pay. So if we want to be, you know, getting that income from their business, we do want to make sure that they are able to thrive. And I don't really have any particular policies, suggestions to that end, but be in mind, keep in mind that for this, them to thrive, they're going to need a little bit more help, I think, and more, you know, whatever it takes. I know one idea that is being talked about now is to moving on to allowing consumption lounges in town. I know we weren't really ready for that when we came up with our, our ordinance that we have now, but I think the community's kind of warming up to the stuff, and it might be time to think about that. Generally, communities that allow the consumption as well, bring in about a third more money than the communities that don't. And it, that's can be very valuable. We want to bring people into town to use our dispensaries, purchase their legal marijuana, and then we want them to be, have a place to use it. You can't legally smoke it on the beach, you can't smoke it on the street, but we would like those people to go to the beach. They come buy the marijuana, they go to a consumption lounge, consume, have a little stroll at the beach, get the munchies, go to our restaurants, buy some taquitos, whatever. I think it, it's a good idea to allow that. Also, a lot of people don't have a safe, legal place that they can consume. Maybe you live in an apartment with a baby, you don't want to smoke with the baby in the, or whatever, or an elderly person. We don't all have that luxury. And because the way the law is written, you cannot smoke in public or, you know, outside. If you don't have a yard, you don't really have a legal, safe option that you're not going to be getting the smoke in other people's faces that don't want it. So consumption lounges would be something to consider. I'll be reporting more stuff as I learn more, but I'm happy to say it exists now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Jivononi. I've had the good fortune of living in Pacifica for over 40 years. I love my community, and I'm concerned about some members of it that have fallen on difficult times. I've come here tonight to ask you to be a beacon of compassion for those in our community in need of help. I urge you, one, to vote against banning RVs in our city. These vehicles are people's homes who don't have other options. And, two, to please support an urgent ordinance to implement just cause eviction protection for our residents.
That's on our agenda. These are items not on the agenda?
Oh, okay. I, sorry, I didn't understand.
You can come back and talk on item number 12 on that?
Okay, well, that's all I wanted to say was to please be a beacon of compassion for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And now that's it for oral communications, unless someone wants to get up. Okay, seeing none. Council Communications, who would like to start?
I'll go. I attended a Peninsula Clean Energy deep dive session with one of the directors emeritus this past Friday night. It was a fun thing to do on a Friday night. But what didn't I learn that night? I mean, I, I learned the, the amp loss is equal to the square root of the amount of energy that's going through. I mean, stuff that I, I don't know, if I should have learned it, I was trying to tell my husband, and he was like, "Go on." I was like, "Hold on, I have to get my notes out here." Probably a lot of the common folk who are on that board know that, but it's, it's just, it's mind blowing. Sometimes you sit on these boards and you're a council member, but you really don't have any background, you have a passion for the, you know, the F, you know, the, for clean energy. And anyway, I want to make sure that everybody here knows that Peninsula Clean Energy is generally committed to providing clean energy for 5% less than the cost of PG&E. That from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. every night, we're using, at 51% of the energy that we use is natural gas. It's, it's not clean. So think about that next time you're, everybody's coming home at 4:00 and flipping on all the lights and throwing a load of washing, running the dishwasher. Think about doing that after 9:00. Or if you have someone that stays home in the day, that's the, the, the most time clean energy is used is in the middle of the day, so running your washers and things like that in the middle of the day. I learned about the Public Utilities Commission and the California Independent System Operator whose charge it is to, that's CAISO's, charge it is to basically bill that energy out and make sure that there's enough. I learned about resource adequacy, revenue requirements, and I feel a lot more equipped to be able to represent us, but I also feel a lot more passionate about making sure that we're all committed to reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and, and really just getting clean energy to where it needs to be. Some of the, everybody that was there, you could have gone, and, and people were just kind of brought their friends, and somebody came, everybody came with such interesting knowledge, right? And, you know, somebody was a mechanical engineer from India, and he had a great, you know, viewpoint, and somebody else was all their whole lives, you know, 40 something years in battery storage, and it just, it's really, it's really interesting. And one of the things that was said about the current shut offs was that California is a very desirable place to live, and California Public Utilities Commission has committed to providing everyone with energy. And people, we, we, we live in places that we historically have never lived, so it's getting harder and harder to get energy to these places, making sure it's clean energy, and also keeping up with maintaining, you know, all the pathways to that energy. So just be mindful of that and trying to think about your energy usage. Reducing is also a big thing. It usually is like, how, how can we use clean energy? Well, how can we also reduce our energy? And I just want to tell you a little bit about that. Also, I wanted to remind you that November 17th through the 23rd is Pacifica, it's United Against Hate Week, and Pacifica stands united against hate. We have flyers, if you want to hang in your window, you can pick them up at City Hall. And if you or your organization, Pacifica Peace People maybe, Sanchez Art Center, want to do something in support of that, the city would be happy to help promote that, and I would also be happy to help promote and get folks there. So it could be an art project, it could be a stand on the side of the road kind of thing, but I'm in if, if you are. So reach out to me if you're interested. I also want to promote the Aloney Portola Celebration this weekend, November 2nd. Starts at 8:30 with a hike, if you're up for it, but then you can find the rest of the information on City of Pacifica's webpage. I also want to remind everyone that this weekend is daylight savings time. So spring ahead, fall back, do we get an extra hour of sleep?
Gain an extra.
Of course, I'm only concerned about sleep.
You get an hour.
Spring forward, fall back.
Fall back.
Fall back. Okay, so.
Yay.
So we get some sleep.
It'll be in the dark, though.
Yeah. Anyway, I also wanted to say thank you to everyone who was so patient over the last few days, and I want to thank PG&E for being out there. I mean, I, I drove down to Monterey today, and I counted 15 PG&E vehicles just on the way down, and on the way back even more. And I want to thank the city staff, I want to thank Public Works and Pacifica PD, because you all have families too, and you probably were without power also. And I know, you know, family comes first, but, you know, you're also working public service, so thank you. And, and that's really all I want to say. So stay tuned, there may be more outages, and just be prepared, and help each other out, help each other out. Thanks.
Sorry. Mary?
Okay. Hello, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight, being civically engaged. I really appreciate all of you being here tonight. You know, when I look back at the past couple of weeks, it feels like I didn't do a lot, but actually, we did, because I went down to the California League of Cities, League of California Cities, right, is that how you say it? Conference, so it was the first conference I got to go to, and I learned a lot. I was only there for one day, so I didn't get to see all the things that happened on the first day. But I did attend a couple of workshops. One of them was talking about how cities in Silicon Valley are using technology to keep in contact with their community. These cities have a ton of money, and they're doing a whole lot with, with technology, so that was pretty interesting. But I think the most important part of my trip was actually attending the Coastal Cities Meeting, where all the coastal cities got together and were talking about their local coastal plan and sea level rise, and how they are working with the Coastal Commission. And it was really interesting for me to be around the table with all of these cities and hear all the things that we have in common with them, and all the things that we have that are different, and just how people are coming together to, to really talk about these things. So I, I was really important that I was there. And unfortunately, I had to miss the Emergency Preparedness Committee again, so I want to apologize to Sergeant Glasgow, Captain Clements, and everybody on the committee. It's a really important committee, commission to, to be a part of, so I will be there next month. I'm so sorry I had to miss it again, but I was at the conference. I attended Aloney Day this past weekend at the Sanchez Adobe. It was beautiful. We should all go out and see the new, the new digs out there. It's really exciting, and Pacifica should be really proud. So I want to tell you a story. There's a new frozen yogurt place on Francisco Boulevard, and I don't have the card with the name of, of the owner or the name of the shop, but I wanted to tell you a story because I'm so excited to have a merchant like him in our community. Originally, he had had a, a place on Palmetto, and because his, his business caters to young people, he didn't want to be close to the cannabis shops. So he closed up his place on Palmetto, and he moved his shop to Francisco, so that when all the kids were coming to patronize his place, that they could come without having to walk past the cannabis shops. So people like him in our community, we are really blessed to have him, and I just wanted to thank him, and next time, I'll have his name. So, that's all.
Mike?
Let's see, I attended the Samhail County Visitors Bureau had their monthly event here in Pacifica at the Pedro Point Brewery, which is in Pacific Manor. And that was a well-attended event, and it was fun. I also was at the League of California Cities, and we all went to different workshops on different topics to cover different things. I was also at the coastal one. Interesting, more for work, I attended a union classified training class, and then also a whole seminar on labor management for employers and labor. So, that's it.
Sue?
I was at League of Cities, and I agree that probably the highlight for me was the Coastal Cities Meeting. I would add to that, the Environmental Policy Review Committee was really enlightening. I went to that because they were discussing one of the resolutions, and I was the voting delegate for Pacifica, so I really wanted to be well-informed. And it was quite interesting that somebody, a city in Imperial Beach, California, as far south of us, of, in and still be in California that you can get, was bringing forward an issue with this resolution, which did pass, by the way, at the end of the, at the end of the conference. And the, and the issue was in regard to untreated sewage that is flowing into the ocean in Southern California because of a river that flows through Mexico and into Southern California, and then lets out at the ocean. And I was so struck by how much work we do in this community with our limited resources, and how aware we are and how focused we are on, on protecting health, on protecting our ocean. And it feels really distressing to think that very far south of us, it's going on unabated. And so I was very excited and pleased that the resolution passed, because it will allocate funds, it will focus on improving the treatment plant that's there, and requiring sewage treatment, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of details I can bring forward another time. But what was most important to me was to just say that, you know, even Little Pacifica up here can focus and help with statewide issues. By the same token, out of 471 cities, there are 61 coastal cities. And I worked hard at the League of Cities Meeting to enlighten cities who are not coastal cities about the issues that we are facing, about our erosion, about our sea level rise planning and our local coastal plan, and about the need to protect our infrastructure and to protect our homes and our businesses and our citizens in light of what we all know is happening with climate change and with sea level rise. So it was a very good conference, it was well worth the time to take three days off work and juggle to make that happen. Learned a lot about housing and land use issues that I didn't know, and I still have so much to learn. And some other interesting topics were on ways of using. And some other interesting topics were on ways of using data for decision-making in cities. So it was a very productive time. In addition to that, I attended the Pacifica School Volunteers Board Meeting last Thursday evening, I think it was. And I've pretty much been preparing for tonight, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
I also went to the San Mateo County Convention and Visitors Bureau, so I'd like to thank the Green Enchilada and Pedro Point Brewing for having it in Pacifica, because...
Grape in the Fog.
Oh, and Grape in the Fog, because they usually have them on the peninsula, and it was really nice to have it right here, and it was quite full, so it was nice to see. And the League of Cities, I went to the Fire and Disaster Resiliency Meeting, which led into a lot of topics that we are just going through ourselves here. Paradise had a plan, and it didn't work. And sometimes things don't work the way you think they're going to, because things change in disasters, so we can only do the best that we can do. And that was a really hard meeting to go to, but they are coming back, they have resiliency. And I went to accessory dwelling units, which we do already have an ordinance about that, but I learned more and more, and the Coastal Cities Group. I went to the ribbon cutting for Bookkeeping Plus, I think they've been in business for forty years, so it was a re-grand opening, and I'm sorry, I don't have the actual years. On Friday, went to the Council of Cities at a company called Zoox, Z-O-O-X, which is in Foster City, and they have a new type of self-driving car, which they are currently testing in San Francisco. It will have no steering wheel, the people will face each other, and it's a very interesting concept, not yet ready for the public. Thank goodness.
But they're working on it.
They're working on it, they're getting there. The Aloney Portola opening of the New Interpretive Center is not quite finished, but it was a really great event, and there were a lot of people there, the county was there, and that was a good event. Yesterday, I worked to talk to the police, our city managers, our assistant city manager, and everyone else, to try to get the traffic to move smoothly. As was said earlier, we are unable to put our police force out there. We did have two people manning, and then we got help from PG&E. I talked to Caltrans today, and they were saying that we do have generators now that are coming for the lights, so in the future, we will have that issue. It's not a Pacifica issue, it's a regional issue, so people from down the coast need to understand too, that it is regional, it's not just a Pacifica issue. I know we went through a lot. I went to the Community Resource Center today, at the community center, and it was packed. It was full of people who were charging their phones, and that's all coming from a generator. So we thank Pacifica, of course, for having that center, PG&E for providing items, and everyone in this whole town for being patient during this. And we can keep our fingers crossed that at four-thirty AM, our power doesn't go out again. Please, and please, everyone, get the San Mateo County Alerts, it's www.smcalert.info, and if everyone has the alerts, it'll help, because you'll know more about what's going on, and you can also get PG&E alerts. Now I'm going to go into an issue that I know is totally uncomfortable, and it's the RV situation. The most of my complaints that I get, and I get probably ten to twelve a day, are related to the RVs. I'd like to thank the task force, I know they haven't completed their job, and many people got up today and said, there's a plan. I have not seen any plan, and they haven't had the time to come forward to give us a plan, but it's got to stop. It's increasing and increasing. I have a friend who was in Wyoming, and they asked her where she was from, and she said Pacifica, and they said, oh, that's great, that's where we're moving, we're taking our RV so that we can live by the water in Pacifica for free. And that's not right. We have massive dumping, the RV dumping that happened in Park Mall, that the city took care of because they had to, and that's private property. We have the garbage company talking constantly about the issues of picking up huge bags of fecal matter. It's not right for all of the other thirty-eight thousand citizens in Pacifica, and that's who we represent. And I have compassion for the people, but I don't think that our town can continue to support this going further. If the, I mean, you talked about a housing program that could house twelve RVs. We had thirty-eight at the first count, we probably have two-hundred, they are now everywhere, and it's on YouTube, people are saying, please, oh, go to Pacifica, it's real easy, you won't get caught, nothing will happen to you, you can just park on the ocean. And I don't agree that ninety percent of the people are from Pacifica, because I've seen many people, and I know that there are people who drive here, go to work, come back to their RV, sleep there at night, and go back to the valley. So there are a lot of different types of people living in RVs. I haven't seen any suggestions, and this is, to me, a health and safety issue that needs to be taken care of. And I would like to propose that on a next agenda, we study bringing back the initial ordinance that we had about overnight parking for the RVs. Thank you.
And staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vodorlos, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. I was also at the League of California Cities Meeting, and then had a back-to-back conference travel out to Tennessee for the International City County Managers Association Annual Meeting, which is a gathering of, this year, over four thousand city managers from around the country and the world, so it was very informative, a lot of good sessions and best practices. And we're all struggling with a lot of the same issues around the country. I just wanted to take a minute here and talk a little bit about the Public Safety Power Shut Off to augment what Mayor Vodorlos said, and just provide some information. So it's, while it's been an incredibly inconvenient, as well as detrimental, few days to the Pacifica community, to the residents, to the businesses, to the city organization, I think we're all thankful that there has not been, you know, a significant fire emergency or other that we've had to deal with, so, but that's not to diminish the inconvenience that this PG&E shut off has caused locally, with very little planning time. So I arrived back in town Wednesday night, and Thursday began the planning, as well as all-day Friday, in working with very limited information, changing information from PG&E about the windstorm. So I especially want to extend thank you to all of the city's staff, to North County Fire Authority, staff who are also deployed to the Kincaid Fire up north, to the Police Department and their work related to the PSPS, the Public Safety Power Shut Off. PD also has personnel deployed to the Kincaid Fire to help with those evacuations, to the Public Works Department, Field Services, and the Wastewater Division of Public Works, who really have been working since Friday tirelessly to make sure everything is geared up so that our sanitary sewer stuff works, that appropriate signage and barricades are in place for the anticipated shut off. Also, to the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department, because we had some pretty significant community activities that were planned for the weekend, which we were able to pull off with some borrowing some generators for that event. I also want to point out, often people don't think about the communications aspect to all the staff in the city manager's office, as well as our IT department, for trying to keep those systems rolling and that communication. So it's really been a huge team effort in working in a little bit of a chaotic environment. I want to talk about the traffic signals, because that was obviously the hugest inconvenience, or one of the hugest inconveniences in town yesterday, and in advance, we worked with Caltrans to try to secure backup generators, but that did not happen. Caltrans was not able to secure them, nor were we, to back up the traffic signals, which only operate on battery power for a short amount of time, and then you need a generator to run them. As traffic worsened on Sunday, as the mayor mentioned, the Police Department began traffic control at a couple of the intersections on Highway One, and then were soon joined by PG&E Traffic Control subcontractor, and we didn't know that PG&E had that resource available, so this is part of the chaos. And I think a lot of what I'm saying is that with these PSPSs, there is going to be a lot of debriefing after this incident, leading into the next ones, and if this becomes a new normal moving forward. And that debriefing is not just local in Pacifica, we'll certainly be doing that, but it's going to be regional and across the state on how to better handle this. I was on the phone on Friday with Senator Hill's office about the need for equipment like generators, so that we have them to plan for, you know, the traffic signals or other needs. Speaking about the generators, we're coming out of this, we're committed to improving our response, and importantly, and immediately, we have secured generators, they're city generators, at our expense, not PG&E, not Caltrans, and we'll be pursuing that reimbursement with them, but we've secured generators to have the traffic signals be able to operate. As many may have heard, there's a new PSPS plan to start tomorrow. It's not, at this point, going to affect, except for maybe very southern part of Pacifica, and as the information we put out says, the best way to know is to dial in your address on the PG&E website, to know if it's going to affect that, because the maps that they put out are too general. So thankfully, it's not going to be as significant as the one we just went through, the traffic signals at this point are supposed to be not affected. But again, I took a long time to talk about that, because we're all grappling with how to best move forward through these times with the PSPSs, and we're going to learn, and we're going to become better at it, and I guess I'll stop there on that. I had a couple other announcements, though, on a more positive note. We've been pushing out information to encourage community members that use the Golden Gate National Recreation Areas to comment on the proposed new trail regulations that GGNRA is considering. One of the comments that the city made in our comment letter was to extend the deadline, which was originally today, October twenty-eighth. Hot off the press this afternoon was a communication that they have extended the comment deadline to November twenty-seventh, so we have more time, the community has more time to provide comments directly to GGNRA. We'll continue to push that information out about the portal, where you go, and provide the comments to them. We haven't heard that they're going to be doing additional specific outreach in Pacifica or a public meeting or anything, because we commented about that as well, but at least the deadline is continuing, so continue to encourage community members that are interested to comment on those regulations. I believe I have one more comment. Oh, yes, another great thing is that Director Perez mentioned this, but on Wednesday, the thirtieth, at three PM is the Gina Fassler Parking Lot Ribbon Cutting at the newly-finished parking lot at the end of Fassler Avenue, so the public is invited to that and come up and see the small but important parking lot to be able to access the GGNRA lamp. And that's Wednesday, three PM, at the end of Fassler.
Thank you. And I'd also like to, again, thank all the staff, because it was trying for everyone. Thank you all. And the next item is public hearing. It's the introduction of an ordinance to enact a new Article Fifty-One, Reasonable Accommodation, and to amend Article Thirty-Eight, Administration of Chapter Four of Title Nine of the Pacifica Municipal Code, to establish a procedure for consideration of reasonable accommodation requests.
Good evening, council members. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The item before you is a proposed reasonable accommodation ordinance to allow deviations from residential land use and zoning standards, and projects that improve access for persons with disabilities. This proposed ordinance is in response to federal and state fair housing laws that prohibit discrimination against individuals with disabilities in housing, and require that local jurisdictions take affirmative action to eliminate regulations and practices that deny housing opportunities to individuals with disabilities. Under the proposed ordinance, requests for reasonable accommodations could be made by any person with a disability, his or her representative, or developer, or provider of housing for individuals with disabilities. The ordinance establishes that the zoning administrator shall make a written determination with no public hearing or public notification requirements, when no other discretionary permit is required. If the request for a reasonable accommodation would also require one or more discretionary permits, for example, a coastal development permit, the process for the reasonable accommodation shall comply with the process established for the respective discretionary permit. The first eight hours of staff time to process a reasonable accommodation would be waived, and any information identified by the requister as confidential would be retained in a manner so as to respect the privacy rights of the requister, and shall not be made available for public inspection unless required by law. Creation of this ordinance was directed under Action Program Number Six of the General Plan Housing Element, and was reviewed under the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, as part of the City of Pacifica Housing Element Update, twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty-three negative declaration. The Planning Commission recommended the approval of this ordinance with a vote of six to zero on September sixteen, twenty-nineteen. Therefore, staff recommends that the council move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only the provided reasonable accommodation ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Pretty straightforward. Does someone want to make a motion?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. There are no cards for the public hearing, but would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council now. No questions?
No.
Someone like to make a motion now?
I'll do it.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, no. Do you want to do it?
You're already about to, so.
Proposed action, move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council, the City of Pacifica, to enact a new Article Fifty-One, Reasonable Accommodation, and to amend Article Thirty-Eight, Administration of Chapter Four of Title Nine of the Pacifica Municipal Code, to establish a procedure for consideration of reasonable accommodation requests. TA-116-19, file number two thousand nineteen dash nineteen, and finding that no further environmental review is necessary pursuant to California Code of Regulations, fifteen one sixty-two, as the ordinance was contemplated as part of two thousand and fifteen twenty-three Housing Element, for which a negative declaration was adopted pursuant to the California Environmental Act SEQA.
I second.
Please vote.
I'm not reading it again.
And that passes five to zero.
And thank you, staff, for all your work.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the Planning Commission as well.
And moving on to council consideration, item number twelve, Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-two, Tenant Protection Act of two thousand and nineteen, and we are going to have a presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Vodorlos, and council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I will kick off this brief presentation, and then if City Attorney Kenyon has anything to add, she'll jump in to add information. On October eighth, Governor Newsom signed into law AB fourteen eighty- On October 8th, Governor Newsom signed into law AB 1482, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, which will go into effect on January 1st, 2020. There are essentially two components to this law, one which relates to rent stabilization and one which relates to a just cause eviction component, which prevents landlords from evicting tenants for a reason that's not authorized by the law for, for qualified tenants. Some council members have been approached recently by constituents with concern about recent evictions, potentially in Pacifica. And as a result, council member has requested that the council discuss considering an urgency ordinance for just cause eviction protections to be agendized. The purpose of the discussion tonight is not to consider that ordinance, but is for the council to generally discuss the topic before deciding whether or not to direct staff to undertake the research necessary, as well as the city attorney expense necessary, to prepare that urgency ordinance and bring it back if directed to at the November 12th meeting. The, the just cause provisions in 1842, 1482, apply to tenants that have continuously and lawfully occupied a unit for 12 months. With regard to that, with, with regard to the just cause eviction component, the, an urgency, urgency ordinance, if considered, would immediately put in place just cause eviction protections mirroring the state law that doesn't go into effect until January 1st. And this type of urgency ordinance is concurrently being considered by some other agencies in San Mateo County. I think I'll let the city attorney talk about some of the requirements related to passing an urgency ordinance. And again, the purpose of this conversation is whether to direct us to pursue that work and bring that back to the council.
So a couple of points. The first point is, I thought it is important that the council be aware that AB 1482 that was signed by the governor is actually facing legal challenge right now by certain property owner rights activists, basically alleging a takings of that. So the, the validity of that is in litigation. With regard to adopting an urgency ordinance, we would have to do some research to assure that the findings that are needed for adoption of that ordinance could be made. And those findings include that the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety requires that there be a declaration of facts constituting that urgency. And so we would need to do some study to determine that, in fact, there is a real need for an urgency ordinance. We, we adopted some of these findings back in 2017 when we adopted an interim urgency, interim urgency ordinance related to rent stabilization. You will recall that we had some statistics in place with regard to our home unit statistics with regard to the number of renters versus homeowners. We would have to pull together additional statistics like that to assure that we could make the findings. But assuming that those findings could be made, then the ordinance, if adopted at a subsequent meeting, would go into effect immediately. And I'm able to answer any other questions if you have any.
Questions from council?
Go ahead, Mike.
So unlike the previous, I forget the first name, but Hawkins, Costa Hawkins, that did not affect single-family homes, the 1482 does affect single-family homes.
No, it does not.
It does not?
It does not.
I thought I read in the paper it did.
No, it does not.
And I read it on the internet, too, and we all know that's true.
I can tell you exactly who it does affect. That might help.
Yes.
It applies to most multifamily dwellings with the following exemption. So it's multifamily. Units constructed in the last 15 years, and this is a rolling date, meaning that units built in 2006 would not be covered in 2020, but would be covered in 2021. So it's a rolling 15 years. Condominiums and single-family homes, unless they are owned by a corporation or real estate investment trust, and those are generally corporate rentals that they loan out to their executives. Duplexes where the owner lives in one of the units. If there isn't, if his not owner occupied, then it would be subject to this law.
Does it cover, let's say, the landlord's son or daughter? Or does it have to be the landlord himself?
No, it would have to be the, the property owner. And finally, tenants who have lived in the unit for less than one year.
And those are the people not covered?
Correct. So it only covers those who have been in possession of the rental unit for at least 12 months.
And by covered, you mean their rent and the just cause eviction part of it will be enforceable on them?
Yes.
The tenant could, whatever. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Sue.
I was wondering if you could speak to the challenge, the, whatever, you just were referring to, the challenge, the legal challenge, what, how long that takes, what the impact of that might be. Because my understanding is, having been signed by the governor, this law has a retroactive rent cap?
Rollback.
Rollback to September 1?
To March.
Oh, March.
March 2019.
Right, right. And so, but the eviction piece wouldn't take effect until January 1, 20?
January 1, 2020.
Okay.
And so with regard to the litigation that is ongoing, my understanding, and I have not read the actual lawsuit, this is just what I received evidence anecdotally, so just as a qualifier there. My understanding is that the challenge is a takings challenge, and it's a takings challenge to the rent stabilization portion of AB 1482. And specifically with regard to, there are relocation payments that are required as a part of AB 1482. And I know for certain that those provisions are being challenged. There could be other provisions that are being challenged, those are the only provisions that I'm aware of right now. With regard to the just cause eviction and when that comes, goes into effect, there is a difference of opinion on what that means with regard to effect on current tenants in that there may be that a tenant may receive an eviction notice between now and January 1st, but they, that may not go into effect until after January 1st, 2020. And so there's a difference of opinion as to whether or not this new AB 1482 would prohibit actual eviction after January 1, 2020. There are some people that believe that AB 1482 only relates to the notice, so that if a notice was sent prior to January 2020, then it would be effective. There are others, tenant rights advocates, who believe that no AB 1482 was intended to impact termination, so that if there is an actual termination after January 2020, that would not be allowed unless it was in compliance with AB 1482. So there's a, there's a disagreement among attorneys, and we, we, you know, we don't know how that would, would play out.
Michelle, do you know if there's any data collecting pieces to the ordinance, to AB 1482? Like, how are they going to collect the information that, that the communities are going to need to know in order to enforce it? Do you know?
Well, I, I, I don't, the, the AB 1482 merely has rent increases can't exceed a certain percentage. So I don't know that there's data that cities need to collect in order to apply the, the rent restrictions. So it, it will, it will just go into effect on January 1st, 2020 with regard to the rent stabilization, and rents cannot be increased more than the percentage that's allowed for in AB 1482. And it's, I can't recall exactly what that rent increase is, but whatever is listed in AB 14.
Five percent plus CPI.
Five percent plus cost of living.
Yeah. Yes.
I think that's one of my main concerns, is how we are actually going to know. You know, how is, how are our communities going to know what's actually going on unless we're collecting data, so.
So you're asking how is it enforced?
Yes.
Okay. Is it a state agency? Is it a local agency? How is a tenant is raised, let's say, 15%? How, who do they complain to about that?
So my, my understanding is, is that the law does not specify how enforcement's to occur.
I understand is that's one of the concerns with the law. How would it get enforced and implemented? I, I would certainly say that if the law is in effect practically, the way it would be enforced is if a landlord submitted a rent increase that was higher than what AB 142, 1482 allowed, and the tenant did not pay that increase, then the landlord would presumably file an unlawful detainer action, and then that tenant would use AB 1482 as a defense.
My question is for Michelle and Kevin. Have you been contacted by any other city attorneys or surrounding San Mateo County cities about such an urgency ordinance?
I have spoken to the city attorney of Redwood City. They are considering an urgency ordinance tonight. My understanding from her, I have not spoken to the city attorney of Daly City, but that Daly City also was considering an urgency ordinance, both, Redwood City was considering an urgency ordinance related to just cause and rent stabilization. My understanding is Daly City was only considering the Just Cause Urgency Ordinance. But I do not know the results.
Okay. And they're both tonight.
I have a paper that says a notice of exemption must be given to any tenants in a single-family dwelling to make them exempt. There is a notice of exemption that's going to come out for single-family dwellings, otherwise they are, according to the paperwork I have. But it's very up in the air at this moment. I know that there are many interpretations. I've tried to read many of them, and everybody has their own interpretation. My other question was how to, will it be enforced, but that got answered. If you're in a rental for more than 12 months, you have to give a 60-day notice? So the 60-day notice would just apply starting, I mean, if you gave a notice on November 1st for, the person would have to move out at the end of December. So by the time we get to this, it won't even apply. Most people, I think, have lived for longer than 12 months in their units because, and that's all this ordinance applies to. I haven't gotten...
That's the opposite. I, I'm pretty sure it's the opposite, right? It applies to...
So if we were to adopt an urgency ordinance prior to January 2020, and a landlord were to submit an eviction notice between now and November 1st, then that tenant would be protected for any eviction notice from the date after we adopted the urgency ordinance, but likely not before. So depending upon when an urgency ordinance were adopted, that tenant would be protected from the time that the city adopted the urgency ordinance to January 2020, which is when AB 1482 goes into existence.
And can I ask a question on top of that? And the gray area of that is whether or not if someone receives an eviction notice but has not yet reached their date of eviction, we pass it, say, the 12th, and then their date of eviction is the 25th. They, the gray area is right there, because we would be, we would think that because they've not reached their eviction date, that they would be protected.
Well, but others believe that. It's a gray area with AB 1482. I would suggest that we, if the council were to adopt an urgency ordinance, that we clarify that so that it would, it would no longer be unclear. The problem, a, a lot of text with 1482 is unclear. So it is not as precise as it could be.
I think it's very vague.
And the other thing is that it is an urgency ordinance, and the nature of an urgency ordinance is that it is urgent, so that there are folks that are out there in need of this ordinance. So just another part of it.
Is there actual evidence of that? Because I have not received one comment, and I would be a likely person to have received that. I have not received one comment on any person who was going through eviction, not one.
I think we can talk about that during deliberations, or...
I mean, I'm asking the question.
Oh, you're asking me the question?
I'm asking a question. Okay.
Yeah, I've absolutely heard, heard from community members, and I can elaborate on that now or during deliberations, whatever's better.
But we do have a lot of people who want to talk, too.
Maybe we should have cards first.
I'll, I'll do the...
And, and I'm sorry, the city manager just alerted me to something that I forgot to mention, which is very important, that for an urgency ordinance to pass, it does require a four-fifth vote.
Okay. I have 16 cards, so again, I mean, I'll, I think people can talk for three minutes. But please, if you're repeating what the person in front of you says, please just indicate that you agree with the person who spoke right before you. So Thursday Roberts, Ian Butler, and Chris Redfield.
Thursday Roberts. I live in Pacifica. I'm a renter in Pacifica. So we've been having this terrible problem for quite some time now with housing costs and people being displaced. Personally, I'm happy that the state is trying to do something to keep people in their houses. The problem is, is if you get evicted or you lose your housing in Pacifica, you, there's no place else to go. You actually have to leave probably the entire state to find a place that's affordable. The people who are being evicted right now, two seconds ahead of when these regulations go into effect, it's really sad that they're that close to being protected and then not. I don't know why the state didn't realize that this is a missing part of the legislation, but somebody, somebody dropped the ball and didn't include the just cause to take from the time where the, the, it was signed to January 1st, when it goes into effect, because this is what happens. And that's why we were talking about it before with the other ordinance. Not everyone gets evicted, but some people do. And there's nowhere to go. And I understand, if I was evicted and I had nowhere to live, and my best option was keep my job here and live in a car or live in an RV, that would be the best option. And a lot of people have found that to be the case. Otherwise, you lose your job and you move to the desert or something, I guess. So I'm in favor of protecting the people who are currently housed to remain housed and allow them the protection to make it until the, the new ordinance comes into effect, which will protect everyone, starting January. which will protect everyone, starting January.
Thank you. Ian Butler, Chris Redfield, John Keener.
Hi. I know there are a lot of speakers, so I'll keep mine brief. I just want to point out that this ordinance passed in the Assembly on a vote of 46 Democrats voting in favor and four voting against. So in the state of California, 46 of our state senators voted for this and four against. So anybody who is a Democrat and has Democratic values, I think we can agree that this is, this shares our values. And I think, I don't know if all of you in the council are Democrats, but most of you are. So it's not a fringy thing at all. This is what the state of California, the Democratic Party believes in very strongly. And I think that this emergency ordinance would be pretty simple. It's certainly a lot easier to implement than our big, our own local ordinance who are gonna do. You know, I'm sure it'd be a few thousand dollars cost for that, but nothing compared to running what the other one would have been. So it'd be a lot simpler for us. And it's just to make sure that what the state Assembly voted on is able to go into place the way it's intended without people basically taking advantage of a loophole in the law. So it's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. If you're a Democrat with Democratic values, I think they would make a lot of sense to vote for this emergency ordinance to go into place. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, then John Keener, then Marsha.
Good evening, staff, council. And I'm speaking tonight to urge council not to go forward with an urgency ordinance regarding tenant protection. In my opinion, this is another veiled attempt to take away one person's rights and give them to someone else. Rent by its very nature is temporary. The informed voters of Pacifica soundly rejected rent control. I am in a home-for-all situation only because of the threat of rent control. The timing of this urgency ordinance is purely symbolic at the real expense of Pacificans. AB 1482 will only exacerbate the existing supply of housing and hamstring further habitable development. This request is estimated at a cost of staff time at a minimum of $5,000. I know of a group who could put $5,000 to much better use. Thank you.
Thank you. John Keener, Marsha Murphy, Carolyn Harameo.
Good evening, staff and council. I'm John Keener. And let me start by saying that one of the side benefits of coming to council, rather infrequently now for me, is a chance to see old friends. And so, just want to say that. And on to the meat of my little presentation here. I support an urgency ordinance to extend just cause for eviction protection to tenants for a period until January 1st, when AB 1482 takes effect. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marsha, Carolyn, and Carl Gosling.
Marsha Murphy, Pacifica resident. I'm reading this from the Working Families Alliance. Dear Mayor Vladilas and members of the Pacifica City Council, Working Families Alliance of San Mateo County strongly urges the council to consider a temporary moratorium on rent increases and no-fault evictions until January 1st, 2020. The Working Families Alliance believes that safe, dignified, and genuinely affordable housing is a basic human right and the cornerstone of strong communities. Housing policies must increase affordability and prevent displacement and include regulation of rent increases and evictions. Long-term efforts must dictate sufficient land and resources to produce, protect, and preserve, produce, protect, and preserve affordable housing for all. On October 8th, 2019, Governor Newsom signed into law the Tenant Protection Act 2019, AB 1482, legislation that will place an annual cap on rent increases, create new statewide standards for evictions. Law takes effect January 1st, 2020. In the meantime, tenants are vulnerable to no-fault evictions and excessive rent increases. We're beginning to see evidence of these actions in Pacifica. Rent increases and no-fault eviction in anticipation of the law would defeat its intent and purpose, while rent gouging and displacement would substantially impair the act's effective implementation. To protect neighbors and the community during the upcoming holidays, we encourage the city council to consider an urgency ordinance that will cap annual rent increases and apply eviction standards in line with the act language and Costa-Hawken State law on allowable rental units. The author, Richard Rothenstein, made clear in his book, The Color of Law: A Forgotten History of How Our Government Segregated America, in his recent talk in the city of San Mateo. Segregation in the past was the result of government action at the federal, state, and local levels. Today, more and more research makes clear that the Bay Area is in the midst of a new era of residential segregation. As tenants in the region's suburban communities are displaced from the places they call home, we must not allow historical injustices of race and housing to be repeated and passed on to yet another generation. We urge you, our representatives, to take a stand and act today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carolyn Harameo. I have a few questions about the research that would be necessary before the city council could pass an urgency ordinance. For, I'm not clear how this research would be gathered. How will you find out how many evictions or how many people have been given an eviction notice? Do you survey the real estate agencies? How will you determine, I think it says something in there that there, any eviction would, that the evictions would have to jeopardize public peace, health, and welfare? So how do you determine how many evictions could be given before the public peace would be disturbed? How, what kind of research would you do to see what kind of effects evictions have on the health? Do you consult with public health officials, gerontologists, pediatricians? How will that information be gathered? Will it be shared publicly? And how about the public safety? How will that be determined? How many evictions would tip, may, you know, be the tipping point where it would no longer be safe? And who would determine that public safety? Do the police departments determine how many people would have to be evicted before it would become unsafe community? So I think there are a lot of questions here about this research. And I know that the city of Millbrae just passed such an ordinance for just cause eviction. So I'm hoping that this research will also try to figure out how much damage and harm and suffering will be inflicted on people that are evicted. I hope that research will go in both directions. Thank you.
Carl Gosling, Suzanne Moore, followed by Gloria Stofan.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself, just so I put a human face on me, and you might consider my plight a little more compassionately. I grew up on the East Coast, and after college, I traveled westward, had brief stops in Chicago, Denver, Salt Lake City. And when I got to the Bay Area, I realized this was my true home, and I moved to San Francisco. I got a job in a printing company and worked my way up from the bottom, had no experience. I had been in construction prior to that. And ultimately ended up buying two locations from the franchise owner that I worked for. And that's where I met my wife. She found me in the Yellow Pages. It was great. She came in to get some printing. We hit it off, and that was that. We ended up getting married. We had two kids. My son is 29, launched. He's in Seattle selling commercial insurance. My daughter's a senior at UC Santa Barbara, so I'm still shelling out the bucks for her. After a while, we bought a house in Noy Valley. The home had no parking. At the height of the real estate market burgeoning in the '90s, we decided to get a house with a garage, and we moved up slightly sideways, a little bit up. And then the housing bubble broke, and the economy tanked. We both were entrepreneurs. Both of our businesses suffered. We lost our house, and our marriage started crumbling, and that wasn't the only reason, but it was a big factor. We ended up splitting and getting divorced, and I went back to be a renter. And I decided to move to Pacifica for not only the tranquility, but also for lower rent and more space, because I needed a second bedroom so I could host my daughter. We were still co-parenting our kids. We're still great friends, too. So we came back to, I've been here 10 years. I'm 68 years old. I should be retiring like my buddies, but I don't see retirement in my future because I lost everything. I had to file for bankruptcy once I got here. I successfully paid that off. And on October 1st, I received certified mail from the landlord saying, "Dear Carl, notification of your termination of tenancy. As is his right under the law, he didn't have to give me any reason, but I see pretty clearly that it's related to 1482 and the fact that I've been paying under-market rent. I think he wants me out of there so that he can jack it up and re-rent it January 1st at a higher rate." He didn't even approach me to see if I was interested in paying more. He didn't answer my phone calls. He finally, a week later, sent me a really generic email that was not very supportive. So I urge you to consider this just cause provision. Unfortunately, I think I fall in the gray area because I got served on October 1st, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Suzanne, then Gloria, and Jerome Foley.
Good evening. When Governor Newsom signed 1482, the Tenant Protection Act, he was joined by many Californians who supported the law: tenants, advocates, legislators, property owners, and faith-based leaders. The California Apartment Association, Josh Howard's, was present at the signing. Local legislators included Jerry Hill, Scott Wiener, Diana Reddy, Rob Banta. This legislation came out of the hard work of a diverse group of Bay Area stakeholders. The Committee to House the Bay Area was tasked to create a policy package to address the housing crisis. One participant reported that they sat in a room for 18 months and were forced to hear each other's stories. The product of this act of listening is the three Ps: tenant protection, preservation of affordable housing, and safe, affordable housing production. My point is that the California Tenant Protection Act is truly historic, the work of diverse stakeholders, and it's written to protect tenants from rent gouging and no-fault evictions while allowing landlords a fair rate of return. Yet sadly, California communities, including Pacifica, are seeing evidence of high rent increases and evictions prior to January 1st. To protect tenants during the holiday season, several communities, including the Bay Area's Millbrae, Redwood City, Daly City, and San Mateo, are all seeking early protection of 1482. I support a Pacifica urgency ordinance and petition this council to place it on the November 12th agenda for vote. It is consistent with Pacifica's housing goals, is supported by California state leaders, including Assembly Member David Chu, and it's simply the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Stofan, Jerome Foley, and Julie Sterben.
Good evening. My name's Gloria Stofan. I'm very happy that the governor signed AB 1482. It was meant to happen. We've been coming, many of us, to present and speak about a housing crisis, not just here in Pacifica, but in the Bay Area. And finally, this has become a, will be, excuse me, will become implemented in January, January 1st. I come before the city council, considering and directing the city manager and city attorney at the November 12th city council meeting for consideration of the urgency ordinance for just cause eviction. The need's important for those renters who are now being evicted for no cause and are receiving a large rent increase right now before January 1st. This ordinance will bridge two months before AB 1482 is actually implemented. Personally, my son got a termination of tenancy, just like the other gentleman before me spoke. Please support this urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Jerome, Julie, and then Denny Asness.
Good evening, council. I read the poster coming into the building this evening that read, "Pacifica Stands Against Hate," and it's a wonderful public stance to embrace. But I also trust that, as a city, we also stand against indifference, especially cold indifference, to the difficulties and the struggles and the hardships that some members of our community face each and every day. It's been a long time since I took a civics class or social studies class, but I do remember years and years ago, a class on that topic, whether it be national or state or local, that one of the greatest and noblest roles of government, and one of the greatest and noblest responsibilities of those who serve in government, is not only to provide for, but more importantly, to protect the most vulnerable in society. And so I would propose that reflection for you as you deliberate, not just the urgency ordinance, but all matters that you deliberate on that concern the most vulnerable in our city. I thank you.
Thank you. Julie, Denny, and then Ellen Haig.
Mostly, I just want to say I agree with what other people said, and I wanted to sort of repeat that even, even the California Association of Apartment Owners accepted this new law, which definitely states that single-family homes are exempt. It's on their website, California Association of Apartment Owners. So it does not apply to single-family homes. And I just feel like it's greed and spite that is driving these evictions two months before the law, when most people who are renters don't even necessarily know they can appeal it, know they don't have to leave, know they could try to hold on till the first of the month, and passing this urgency ordinance would definitely help them. Thank you.
Denny, Ellen, then Betsy Givon-Honey.
Good evening again. I'm imploring you as city council members to ask the city manager to make the urgency ordinance a report on the agenda to the next council meeting. This urgency ordinance complements Assembly Bill 1482 and will help protect renters, which will help protect renters beginning in January. But this stopgap portion is needed. People are very vulnerable. I know that we've all been hearing about people affected by the fires. I heard someone's story the other day in Santa Rosa who's a renter. She lost her home. She lost everything. She couldn't afford renters' insurance, so she has nothing. And people are in desperate situations. The ordinance is within the spirit of the state law that will go into effect, and it's also within Pacifica's goals for housing. I implore you to support Pacifica to show that it cares about renters, like many other communities you're doing, like Millbrae and LA. You have a chance to act humanely and with caring. Please use it. Thank you.
Ellen, Betsy, and Delia McGrath.
May I provide these to...
Um, you can, no. Um, you can.
Ellen Haig, longtime resident of Pacifica. Good evening, council members. I am urging you also to pass an urgency ordinance to protect renters in Pacifica until the new California law takes effect, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019. And it's just a couple of months away, January. Recently, I and other members of Faith in Action Bay Area attended a Daly City council meeting to support families from three apartment buildings who are being evicted before AB 1482 goes into effect. It was heartbreaking listening to parents and children speak to city council, begging them to pass an urgency ordinance so they wouldn't lose their homes. One father with a wife and four children spoke. He shared how his family had been good renters for 17 years, paid rent on time, and just received a 60-day eviction notice from the landlord before AB 1482 takes effect. He asked, "Where is my family going to go?" Evictions are taking place in Pacifica as well. Tonight, Daly City, Redwood City, and Pacifica city councils are all in session addressing this critical issue, protecting renters until January. You have an opportunity to make Pacifica a city of compassion, a stated goal for all of our residents. Passing an urgency ordinance is consistent with Pacifica's housing goal and keeps those currently housed in a home. Just as an aside, Governor Newsom also just signed another law to limit 10% rent increase to protect renters displaced from fires so they won't be gouged by landlords. Please pass the urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Giovinoni. She left. Okay. Delia Sudagree and Jonathan Markham.
Good evening, council and staff and people here attending this important meeting. So I'm not going to make a speech. I just -- I was sitting there listening to others who, like I, support this emergency ordinance, and I came up with the question, how would it feel if you got an eviction notice? I'm imagining most of you are housing secure, as I feel like I am, but we don't know. We really don't know. And it's really not going to be anything off your backs, as far as I can tell, to go ahead and do this compassionate, urgent ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sudagree and then Jonathan Markham. And those are the final cards I have.
Good evening, Sudagree, Pacifican. Yes, I'm in favor of the emergency ordinance, and for one of the main reasons is the role of government, the role of our city, any city, is to protect the safety, health, and welfare of all citizens. And a fair return on an investment is certainly what we would do and have protected, but also we need to protect all residents, and the residents include those who, if a landlord chooses to go beyond the fair and reasonable return on investment to get whatever, and that at the price of having fellow residents have to flee like refugees in their own town and go to, in order to save their jobs and their kids in school, they go to cars or bushes or RVs. And so the role of government, the role of government is to protect all for the health, the safety, and well-being. Being under a bush in a car and a van, we already heard this evening, this is not a healthy situation for the entire community, much less for those who have to do that in order to survive. What else can I say about that? It's about people, and it's about city council having the discretionary powers. That's one of the unique things about city council, is you have unique discretionary powers that no staff member has. You have it. And you have -- stand for all the people. We are not against landlords. We're all for a fair investment. But when it comes to the point, as said, when other residents end up having to flee to cars, RVs, and bushes, then we turn around and say we have a health problem with feces, et cetera. Yes, it could be coming from the YouTube people saying, "Hey, let's go there." But once before, I suggested, separate them out. Who's really Pacifican having issues and who's out there just to get whatever they can get? Yes, please go for this ordinance. This is the people asking you. You are the people's representatives. You are employed by the people. So I urge you to please all the people. Thank you.
Jonathan Markham.
Good evening. My name's Jonathan Markham. I'm the pastor of New Life Christian Fellowship, and I've been in Pacifica for about 20 years. I just want you to know that very recently, a significant group of pastors and faith leaders gathered together to talk about the challenges of homelessness and homeownership, all of these things in Pacifica, and recognizing the enormity of the problem. But the one thing I can say, although we have very diverse congregations, the leaders of those congregations were passionately in favor of you passing this sort of ordinance. We want to be -- the faith community want to urge you to do everything you can to be a compassionate community and take care of those who need it most. Thank you.
Okay, seeing -- are there -- is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this? Okay, please come forward and fill out a card. You can come up first and fill out the card after, but do state your name, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Wanda Whitaker. I've been a resident of Pacifica since 2003. I do support the passage of this emergency ordinance, and one of the reasons I would like for you to consider that is I want to have a voice for seniors, because this, in effect, will impact senior citizens more than anybody. I see it happening all the time, yet there's nothing to support seniors. And once they are -- they get notices, there's nowhere for them to go. They can try to get senior housing, but there are waiting lists for that senior housing, I mean, thousands of names before they can even have a home. And so I think that we should be thinking of our seniors and other families with children. I think that's the least that we can do. I do believe there are fair landlords. I know some, so I'm not against landlords. I think this gentleman here, I think he could be a fair landlord. I don't know him, but hopefully, he's a fair landlord. So perhaps we can have some type of rent board to help out with these types of circumstances like other cities have adopted. So please, I'm not going to beg you. I'm just going to have you really be fair about this urgent ordinance. Thank you very much.
Now, seeing no one else, and Wanda, if you'll please fill out a card. Thank you. I'll bring it back to council. Council deliberations.
I think we just want to clarify for the record that what we're talking about tonight is providing staff with direction as to whether or not we want them to do a little bit more work on and coming back with an urgency ordinance for us to hear. And so we're all straight. AB 1482 was dubbed the anti-gouging bill, and it's so interesting because in the past few days, I've seen so much gouging going on that the motivation behind it is just so obviously greed. And I'm not saying that this directly relates to landlords, but we're all losing power, and so there are people that went out and bought all the generators at our local Home Depots and Lowe's and are selling them for four times the rate on Craigslist. So we lost our fridge. We lost two fridges. We're lucky enough to have two fridges, and I know that. But we also have friends that took our frozen goods. But there's a woman with an eight-day-old baby that needs warm breast milk down the road. My office also closed, so we weren't able to work from the office because they're shut down, and we were also lucky enough to be able to rent a conference room in a hotel, and they also tripled the price of that conference room. This is, you know, Elvis said that, that money is not the root of all evil. It is greed. And I'm just shocked when I hear these stories. So I feel that, you know, pulling back this bill just a little bit, you know, a couple months to do any sort of damage control that we can is absolutely the right thing to do. I also encourage us to consider putting this together. I think there are enough communities locally in San Mateo County that we can make it happen fairly quickly. And then also there are examples like Sacramento County is hearing it, Santa Cruz County is hearing it, Pasadena is hearing it, Burbank's hearing it. Some of these more southern LA cities have historically been on the cusp of Democratic-Republican. So if they're -- if it's there and it's being heard, Anaheim, Bell Gardens, this is obviously important and affecting everyone. I would also urge anyone who is associated with realtors or in contact with landlords to engage your networks and let them know what's going on. I'm sure they do. But also ask them to take a compassionate stance on this. And I would make a plea that all of my friends up here do that. I also want to thank those folks who came out tonight. We have almost everyone represented here. We've got the faith-based community. We've got several pastors here this evening who are very supportive of this. We've got advocates for tenant rights. We've got former government officials here. You heard two former mayors speak tonight on this issue in support. We heard from renters that are directly affected. We heard from renters that are not directly affected. And we heard from locals who live in Pacifica who have dedicated their retirement to making sure that the folks that they service their entire professional career are not displaced because of greed. And they don't spend their money on high rents as opposed to their medicine. So I'm making a recommendation this evening that we put a few thousand bucks together, and I know it'll be more than 5,000, but 5,000 is nothing to give back to our community a little bit more peace of mind. And I think that's all I'll say for now.
I have a couple questions in terms of the applicability of an ordinance like this. There's a 60-day period that renters have, they must be notified for a period of 60 days if they're to be evicted. Is this correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, if they have a lease, if they have had possession of it for more than 12 months.
More than 12 months. Okay. And what I think I heard you say is there's a lot of uncertainty about the law itself. Is that accurate? Or, you know, what do you feel is, I guess I'm asking for your legal opinion on how enforceable 1482 is in its present state? I know that's going out on a limb.
You know, I mean, I would say that I would have some concerns about some claims that are being made about AB 1482. With that said, I also think that there are ways to address those concerns. I don't think AB 1482 is necessarily illegal on its face. I think that there may be some provisions that could do with some more clarity to avoid confusion, but I don't believe that AB 42 just is an illegal act by the state.
I see. So in terms of the 60-day rule, we're already in that period, are we not? In terms of, I believe it's 60 days, and then there's five-day notifications? I'm not sure about that. I'm not a Realtor, so I don't, and I haven't rented in a really long time, so I don't really know about that. But I understand 60 days is pretty close to January 1st from where we are right now.
November 1st. And there's no notice, I mean, you can give a notice on November 1st that says you have 60 days.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mary.
So I have had people come to me. I actually met with a group of people who have received eviction notices who were too afraid to come here tonight and who probably wouldn't want to reach out to my counsel, my co-counsel here because of the fear, because they still have to find a place to live after this. Regardless of what we do here, they're still going to have to find a place to live. So it was really touching for me to have them reach out to me because they trusted me that I'm not going to put their name out in public and that I'm going to do whatever I can to help them feel safe and secure. We all know that with the passing of 1482, tenants are vulnerable to no-fault evictions, and that all I am asking is to put something in place to protect these folks, you know, especially over the holidays. So if they receive an eviction notice on November 1st, that means that they have to work all the way through the holidays to try to find a place to live. That's stress for their families. That's, it's a horrible thing to try to do, especially during the holidays. I am concerned about being able to collect information to find out what's really going on in our community, so I am going to be requesting that we can get some information about how other communities are doing that, how they are collecting information on rent increases and evictions. So I would like some information back about that to see how other communities are doing You know, when Measure C came around, it was scary and it was horrible, and what happened in our community was there was a lot of fear and a lot of action around that, and I remember just feeling horrible, like, what have we done? And how are these people going to, like, find a place to live? And, you know, so there was a lot of bad feelings around that. But right now, we have an opportunity, because there has been a state law signed, that we can just give a little cushion, just a little bit of cushion for these people so that, you know, after January 1st comes into effect, whatever the state's going to do with this is up to them. But at least here in Pacifica, we can be sure that that gray area isn't so gray, that we can clear that gray area up and say, okay, evictions cannot happen because of what we have the opportunity to do. evictions cannot happen because of what we have the opportunity to do. So, I am requesting that staff bring back urgency ordinance for us to review on November 12.
Mike?
I think this is an extremely difficult situation. We went through it before. Again, the unintended consequences of what people want to bring into law that cause the unintended consequences of people being given notice, which is really wrong. I manage property for other people. I have about 25 properties I manage. Not one landlord has asked to give an eviction notice. Not one landlord has even asked me to raise anyone's rent ahead of this because these are all single-family owners that care about the people. I understand there are people who don't care. They just don't care about other people. And we all do. But I'm not sure that this is the way to do it. I think that our timing, the fact that the laws, we don't even know whether this law is going to actually take effect in the end because of the challenges to the laws. I was trying to find Milbrey to see if Milbrey passed an urgency ordinance, and I couldn't find it on the Internet. It doesn't mean it doesn't exist. The enforceability of this, how are we going to enforce? We don't have people, we don't have a rent control board. We can't establish a rent control board because we don't have the money to establish a rent control board. And so, are people going to police themselves? Who's going to police this? So, I don't even know how, when the law comes into effect, how we're going to enforce it. So, I'm not sure that with the limited amount of time that we have and this coming forward in November, that it's going to do any good. If people are giving notices on November 1, are they effective? If people gave notice on December 1, is that effective that the people would have evictions on February 1? We don't know that yet. And it's such a gray area. It's a really difficult item. And that's all I have to say.
I think I would just like to say that even one person getting evicted during this time is too many.
Nobody else talking?
Do you have direction?
I mean, how can we have direction?
Need a motion and a vote, majority direction to whether we're going to pursue that or not.
Sue or Mike, do you have any input?
No. No, I'll probably vote no.
Sue, no input?
No.
No, I'm telling you that, Sue.
No, she's asking me. No, I think I have all my questions answered.
All right. So, we're going to have a vote?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, Mary, why don't you make that motion? Number 12.
So, I'll make a motion to have staff come back with an urgency ordinance to be placed on the agenda on November 12.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that fails three to two. We're moving on to item number 13. Grant to the Pacifica Historical Society to cover planning. Oh, okay. Sorry, before we go on, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
The Historical Society has identified now an alternate location on private property at the open area southwest of Guerrero's at 162 Reyna Del Mar to move the railcar on a temporary basis, if not a permanent basis. And the temporary nature would immediately require a temporary use permit. And as the council is also aware, the way the application fees work for the planning department is the applicant covers the staff time cost of processing the permits, whether it's a temporary use permit or a regular use permit. And for the temporary use permit, the estimated cost, because it has to be processed by planning staff and prepared and taken to the planning commission for hearing, et cetera, the estimated cost is approximately $2,000. The master fee schedule approved by the council includes the planning and building fees to be charged to applicants and does not include provisions for waivers or exemptions for planning or building fees. And as you're also aware, those fees are critical to the planning budget approved by the council so that the planning department can stay within budget throughout the year in processing all of the project applications. As I mentioned, there's two aspects to the cost here. The temporary use permit estimated at $2,000. But after a six-month period, if the site is successful and approved, the Historical Society will need to pursue a minor zoning text amendment and a use permit beyond that six-month period. So, that longer-term process is estimated to cost at least $5,000 in staff time and materials in the future. So, while there's the immediate TUP, Temporary Use Permit, costs, there's the longer-term costs. So, the total cost for eventually, if the site is successful, could be up to $6,400 in the long term to the Historical Society. So, in the past, the city has done a similar granting of funds to keep the general fund whole for the Pacifica Resource Center. When they did a remodel in 2016, a grant was made from back then, the ERAF Fund, to the general fund to cover their building permit fees. The importance and the reason this is unique as the PRC is a very vital organization to Pacifica, the Historical Society fulfills a nonprofit community need by educating visitors about Pacifica's history, attracting visitors to Pacifica. That carries an economic development benefit for the city. And of course, and part of the reason that the city has been in partnership with them on the railcar is that the Ocean Shore Railcar could further enhance historical tourism and economic development for the city. So, therefore, my recommendation is in continuing partnership with the Historical Society to grant the up to $2,000 amount to them or to the general fund to keep that fund, the planning department budget, whole. There's a couple of alternatives the council could consider here that I mentioned in the report. One is to decline to grant the funding to cover their planning fees or to consider granting an amount higher than $2,000, given that they might have additional expenses in the future. But in balancing on the whole, this action, I'm recommending the $2,000 amount. That completes my report.
Thank you. Questions from council? We do have cards from the public. If no one wants to ask any questions at this moment. Okay, we have Shirley Gibbs, Deidre Crowe, Kathleen Manning, and then Sue DeGree.
City Manager Woodhouse and members of the city council. My name is Shirley Gibbs, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Pacifica Historical Society. Currently, we have enough funds in our Ocean Shore Railroad account to further our restoration of the passenger car. But we know these funds will disappear quickly when we move the car from its present location at the Clara Creek site to our new location. We have signed a two-year contract with the Pereira family to move to a vacant space just behind Ballamar Station Restaurant. A local general contractor has been hired, an insurance purchased for the car itself, and also liability insurance for volunteers who work on the train car. And we've also purchased building materials. At the present, the only means of income we have to restore this car is from our monthly rummage sales. And it takes a lot of 50 cent to $5 items to make up the amount of this conditional use permit. We are fortunate to have a building in which to house our sale and volunteers to staff it. We're also grateful to the citizens who donate to us monthly. Our sale on the Friday and Saturday of each month brings in approximately 300 people, and we count them to view the museum. It was said when we first restarted to remodel, remodel the Little Bran Church, that it takes a lot of cupcake sales to complete the restaurant. takes a lot of cupcake sales to complete the restoration. Well, we did it, though, through hard work and dedicated volunteers, and we now have a beautiful community museum that we can be proud of. We know that the passenger car of the Ocean Shore Railroad traveled down here between 1912 and 1920, and we've contacted a grant writer, and we've planned fundraising events to supplement the income from our rummage sales. Please give consideration to refunding the cost of our conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Deidra, Kathleen, and then Sue.
Good evening. My name is Deidra Crowe, and I've called Pacifica my hometown for 65 years. I'd like to review the economic boost to Pacifica that will happen once the car is restored. Railfans and out-of-town friends will visit our town and stay and dine here as a part of visiting the museum that will be located inside the railroad car, passenger car 1409. Also, railroad groups throughout the western United States will be invited to view our newly renovated railcar and museum as well. And many often have regional meetings and would love to have us as their host and hostesses during their meetings, and we would make that facility available to them. We'll need, of course, a permanent place to stay, but first things first, we need to finish the car. And thank you so much for all of your cooperation and help up to now, and we're closer than we've ever been. So I've just finished two very successful volunteer days. We had marvelous turnout, and we've cleaned up the site, and we're moving forward with the move as soon as we can. Thank you again.
Thank you. Kathleen and Sue.
Kathleen Manning. And so we have a little temerity to come here and want to hand out, but we hope that you'll see that this will be a boon to the city. And I thought maybe I'd just give you a little rundown on some of the ways we've raised money in the past. We have had a few people that have made some major contributions financially. That's been good. That's kind of given us a boost. We've had hosted some events where we've had people that are experts on the railroad come and talk and give presentations. Those have been very successful, and we've had people from all over the state come to those. We've had Railroad Day at the museum, where we had 100 people come and different families come and have fun and learn about the railroad. And then, as Shirley mentioned, the ever-popular rummage sales, which we continue to have every month. And people are very generous and give us wonderful things to sell, because they know what our goals are. And a lot of people that come to buy, buy things that maybe wouldn't have bought things otherwise. We are looking for grants, and we, of course, have the ever-popular Pacifica Jack Cheese. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
Thank you. A broken record has its merits, so I'm repeating what I've said a million times, and I'm very happy to hear the City Manager mention it, economic boon for the city, although I don't think you use boon, but economic aspect of this. And also remember that the Historical Society is not only working on one thing at one time. There's three things at least going on, if not four, because the cheese is already achieved, is they created the Little Brown Church Museum, they have a docent program going that's starting to boom, and so the history is being taken on by more and more people to share with more and more people. And the Little Brown, and the railcar. The railcar has been out of sight, and I think as the railcar becomes more visible to people, you'll probably see a lot more interest in that. We have such a varied and rich history in Pacifica that it's hard to actually realize how complicated or rich and involved and numerous and just, I don't know, I'm a Navy brat. We move every two years. I don't know of any other place where the history is as unique as this, for us, for this county, for the state, for the nation. And so the economic ability, they have put their best into it, I think, for the rest of us community to become more aware and for city legislators, because you know, when you sign a letter for something and speak up for something, it gives all the local energy more blessings, shall we say. So keep that in mind. They're not coming, I would say, with temerity, I would hope, with pride, and that you also are realizing that pride and investing in the city's future economics. And so that's my broken record. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other cards, no one wishing to speak, I'll bring it back to council. I'm going to speak.
Okay.
I do think the railcar is a benefit to our community. I think it's a great addition to the Little Brown Church. I can see it in the future. I think there are a lot of rail buffs. I've gone to the museum for the train day and every other event, even an aloney lunch there. So every event I can attend, and I appreciate them and all the hard work that they've done on this. I hope that moving forward, they do have the funds to continue to do the work and the continuation of the permits, the money that you'll need to continue the permits after this initial one.
Ditto.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we direct the City Manager to put into the budget $2,000 for, transfer of up to $2,000 from the general fund undesignated balance to the Planning Department budget as a grant to the Pacifica Historical Society to cover Planning Department fees necessary to process a temporary use permit for the relocation of the Ocean Shore railcar.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I have the resolution.
Yeah, just to clarify on the motion, it's actually to adopt the resolution doing everything that you just said.
I move that we adopt a resolution doing everything I just said. I love this. I think it's great, and I'm appreciative that one of our fellow council members put this forth. But because I have a pulpit, I will use it tonight. I want to point out that we tout being compassionate community, yet we decline to comment on the welfare of Pacificans needing an urgency ordinance. We tout sustainability, yet we decline climate action coordinator position for $120,000 for one year. But without comment, we approve $2,000 to the Historical Society, which is well-deserved, and I thank you for your hard work.
And I just want to say really quickly that I'm so glad you got the car moved to where you got it, where you're going to move it to, because there's other railcars there, and it just fits perfectly there. So I just wanted to say that I'm happy you're able to do that.
And the other thing, my grandfather was a railroader. He worked for Redding Railroad. My father was a railroader. He worked for Redding Railroad and then Norfolk Southern and Conrail in his, and 43 years. So I fully support railroads and all things railcar.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, appointments to the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, Library Advisory Committee, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and Parks, Beach, and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, City Council. The City of Pacifica has recently recruited for applicants for the following committees and commissions, the Economic Development Committee, the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, Library Advisory Committee, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, to fill vacant, to fill three vacancies on the Economic Development Committee for one partial term to expire October 2020, and two full terms expiring October 2023. For three vacancies on the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, for one partial term expiring October 2020, and two full terms expiring October 2023. For one vacancy on the Library Advisory Committee, for one vacancy on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee for a partial term expiring May 2021, and for two vacancies on the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, one for a partial term expiring May 2020, and one for a partial term expiring May 2023. These opportunities were published in the Pacifica Tribune, on the city's website, and through the city's weekly Connect with Pacifica e-newsletter. We received applicants for all five of these committees and commissions. We received six applicants for the Economic Development Committee, three applicants for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, two applicants for the Library Advisory Committee, two applicants for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and three applicants for the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. Interviews were held by City Council on October 1st, 2019. If it pleases the council, I will distribute lists of those applicants for your deliberative process to review. And these lists are to be used for a process to assist in consensus-building by the council and are not to be considered votes. This would be to help build consensus towards making a formal motion for appointments, and the formal vote will be on the motions that are made for the named individuals to be appointed to those positions on the committees and commissions.
Is this a pack for everyone?
Yes.
So no, take one.
Take one.
And then pass it down.
Oh.
I think it was really dark.
I know, it's confusing. I just didn't know it looked like.
With no lights interfering.
Okay.
Probably true. Somebody posted next door it was on Standish, but I thought it was more down on Terranova.
Yeah, me too. Did you hear the big boom, that really big boom?
I'm sorry?
I've all heard that boom.
Grunno. I heard it. It was loud. It was louder than I know it.
Sarah, did you want us to return these all in at once, or just like by commission?
You can return them at once, and then we'll take a break to tabulate what you've provided to me.
Thanks. And you want us to write her name on them, right?
No.
You don't need to write your name on them.
Oh, I thought we used to do that. Okay. That was a rather vociferous no, Michelle. Got an opinion.
Pathetically no.
These will be just reported back for information only, and I'll be providing what you've returned to me for information only.
I just, I just did, just to keep you unsuspect. Yeah.
The ones from the packet. Give her the, this was just my, this was my sample ballot. This one work? Okay, and now we're going to take a break while she counts.
Do you like some snacks?
Partial term.
I'm sorry.
As we were driving back.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order.
For the Economic Development Committee, I have five marks for Lisa Grimaldo, five marks for Farzad Sadi, and five marks for Shawn Thompson. For the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, I have four marks for Douglas Ladeke.
Would you like to do them?
Yes, yes, do, have them deliberate once you've given.
So do we, so we're going to do them individually? So do we have a motion to accept?
I have a question on that, before a motion, if you don't mind. If, I understood what Sarah was saying, we have a short seat. So how does that work? Do we make a recommendation in the motion of who goes in which seat, or how does that work?
Yes.
I just need clarification.
You, you would want to make a motion to appoint an individual by name to the, to the selected positions.
Okay.
So for, for the Economic Development Committee, there are three vacancies. One is for a partial term that expires October 2020, and two for full terms expiring 2023. So your motion would want to specify which to appoint to the partial term.
So you would want to have public comment now for all of the committees? One public comment for the whole agenda item?
Okay, even though we haven't gotten to each one. Okay, is there, are there any comments from the public on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring that back to council, and we'll continue. And we were on the Economic Development Committee, so is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Lisa Grimaldo, Farzad Sadi, and Shawn Thompson, with Farzad Sadi as the, to the seat that ends October 2020.
And is there a second?
Second.
Um, is there discussion?
No.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes five to zero.
For the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, I have four marks for Douglas Ladeke, five marks for Charlie Lotridge, and five marks for Evelyn Taverna. For the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, we have three vacancies, one for a partial term expiring October 2020 and two full terms expiring October 2023.
I make a motion that we appoint Evelyn Taverna, Charlie Lotridge, and Douglas Ladeke to the Emergency Preparedness, with Douglas Ladeke the shorter, shorter term.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes five to zero.
For the Library Advisory Committee, I have five marks for Christine Bywater.
I move to appoint Christine Bywater to the Library Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Sorry, vote again. I cleared the votes by accident.
And that passes five to zero.
For the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, I have four marks for Kurt Davis and one mark for Doug Ladeke.
I move that we appoint Kurt Davis to the Open Space Parkland. Is that a full term or a short term, or?
There's only one.
For the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, it is for one partial term expiring May 2021.
Okay. I just was asking for information.
Another point of information, did you say Doug Ladeke for Emergency Preparedness?
No.
Or what are we on, Open Space?
Now we're on Open Space.
This is for Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee.
And so we also got him for, for Emergency Preparedness, and there.
Yes, there, there were a few applicants that had noted interest in several of the committees and commissions.
Right, but I.
No, that, it was Kurt Davis.
It was Kurt Davis that got the votes.
Oh, it was Kurt Davis that got the votes?
Yeah.
So I think, did I, I think I made a motion to Kurt Davis for Open Space and Parkland.
I second.
Please vote. Okay, and that passes four to one with no, one no vote. Okay, and we are at the end of the meeting?
No, one more. Sorry.
Sorry.
For the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, I have five marks for James Haywood and five marks for Gail Benton Shoemaker.
Is there the same term, or is there two, there are two terms, right?
Yeah, one's May 2020 and one partial term expiring May 2023. Right? They're both partial terms?
They're both partial terms. These were vacancies from resignations, and they are partial terms of different lengths. So one partial term that expires May 2020 and one partial term that expires May 2023.
Unless, are you going to make a motion? That's fine.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that Gail Benton Shoemaker expires May 2023, given her experience with the tree stuff.
I'll second that.
And you're also appointing?
And then Jim Haywood, the partial term expiring May 2020. No offense.
So that needs, so that's one motion?
I'll second that, yeah.
Yeah, seconded.
So we have a motion and a second. We're voting. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Now, I will adjourn the meeting in honor of all the first responders, the people who have homes, have lost their homes, and everyone who's been evacuated, and thank goodness that we have our electricity back and that we're all safe. Thank you.